This is Miriam Raftery with the East County Magazine Radio Show on KNSJ 89.1 FM, Descanso. And today, my very special guest is Alex Welling. He is a candidate for the Cajon Valley Union School District Board of Trustees. Alex has a law degree as well as bachelor's degrees in political science and government. He's currently a communications manager of wildfire resiliency for San Diego Gas and Electric Company. He's been a public communications officer for Sandag, a field director for the American Action Network, and he's also served on the City of Chula Vista's Board of Ethics. He is a conservative running to challenge Cajon Valley's Board Chairman Jim Miller, who is also a Republican. Alex says he's concerned about respecting parents' rights, transparency, improving test scores, and holding staff accountable. So Alex, welcome to the show.
Thank you so much for having me, and if I can, just one minor correction.
Okay.
Um, I wouldn't necessarily say I have a law degree, but I do have a master's in legal studies, which is about the equivalent to one or two years of law school. So I wouldn't necessarily go so far as saying I have a JD.
Okay.
But I do have a little bit of background there.
Thank you for clarifying that, the legal background. Apologies on my side, I was skipping the resume quickly. As you know, I came home planning to prep for this interview to find a SWAT operation just down the street from me helicopter flying overhead with some kind of message. So I need to just say I got a bit distracted sending alerts out about that.
Of course.
Okay. Um, anyway, Alex, I wonder if you could start by telling us a little bit more about yourself. You know, do you have any kids? And what got you engaged and concerned about what's happening in this school district?
Yeah, absolutely. So as far as a little bit of background, um, you know what? I grew up in, in between homes in Chula Vista and El Cajon. I've got family in both cities. And, you know, got married, gosh, when was that? Back in 2017. And, you know, my wife and I were living down in Chula Vista, had just had our first child, decided to move back into kind of the East County area. So right now, right about now, we're, we're on the border of Spring Valley and Rancho Cindia, kind of right off of Hamish on the 94. And prior to moving, you know, I realized our son was starting to get of age to start going to school. And, um, you know, my wife and I were both, uh, raised in public school. So it's definitely important to us to, to make sure that they have a quality education and have that kind of same experience that we did. And I was concerned about test scores. Um, you know, test scores were extremely low to the point where family and friends who, who live in different districts were trying to tell us that, hey, maybe you should put our address down and you could send, uh, our kids to that district, which is not necessarily the most ethical thing to do. But, um,
No, that's But I was, I was gonna say, you know, we first raised alarm bells about the test scores that were declining in this district several years ago. And when I tried to ask the superintendent, David Maishiro, who's still there, he became very angry and said, Miriam, they're measuring the wrong metrics. And I said, sir, they're measuring math and English. Well, it's the wrong metrics. And unfortunately, it's gotten even worse since then. And thank you for sending the latest stats. It's really, I think, disturbing to see that they're now, Cajon Valley now ranks in the bottom 50% statewide overall for test scores, with only 34% in math and 49% in reading. That is down sharply from 2014, when they were around 70% in math and somewhere around close to 85% in reading and language arts. This, even though spending rose sharply and is higher than the state median, so they're spending more money, but it's not showing up in the academics, you know? What happened? And what would you do if you were elected trustee to get those test scores up?
You know, you bring up a really good point. Spending goes up, test scores go down. So I think the real question is, where's the money going?
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I've, I've told several people and, and, you know, anybody that, that, that is willing to hear me speak, that the first action that I want to do as a member of the Board of Trustees is call for an independent audit. Because we need to be able to answer that question. Where are our tax dollars going? And why are tax, or why are test scores continuing to tank? Um, you know, just over the last year, I have seen and been made aware of, and actually really dived in and looked at where tax dollars are going. And they're not going to the students. You know, just several months ago, I, I think it was actually two or three months ago, the district held a celebration for your teachers, a, a welcome back ceremony, which I'm all for, you know, we need to celebrate our teachers, but we also need to make sure that they have the resources that they need to be able to succeed and provide our students with the tools and resources that they need to lead successful lives later on in life. But let me tell you this. The bill for that event was to the tune of somewhere around $360,000 for a one day event. They spent just over $100,000 on the BA House Arena, about $150,000 on food. They spent about $14,000 on fireworks and somewhere in the tune of, I think it was like around $10,000 for a sand artist to come in.
Yeah, this is like a continuation of, you know, issues we've seen over and over. Back in 2019, Alex, we reported about, you know, complaints that the district had spent over, I guess it was from 2014 to 2019. 2014, by the way, is when Maishiro became the superintendent, the last, you know, time they had high test scores. They had spent over a half a million dollars, $576,000 on marketing and promotional videos. And, you know, we did a comparison and no other district nearby had spent more than 15,000. So I mean, this is like 20 times, I, I don't know, you know, huge, a huge, huge discrepancy there. And yet, you know, teachers are being told buy your own supplies and pencils in a lot of cases. So there does seem to be something, um, you know, amiss maybe in the priorities there, I would say. Go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, I 100% agree. It really comes down to asking the question, what are the district's priorities? You know, that money could have been spent to, like you said, it could be providing pencils, colored pencils, notebooks, paper, activities for the children. You know, so teachers aren't spending money out of pocket when they don't have to. But, you know, unfortunately, they, there's also the production aspect of these events where, you know, you can tell looking at the YouTube videos that it was a produced video and it's put on to generate clicks. And it's, it's
Raising, boosting student morale. I mean, there's some of that. I'm not gonna say there's no benefit
Yeah.
Videos, but it just seemed like an awful lot of money and maybe they could have gotten it done for a lot less, you know?
And there are ways to do that. There, there, there certainly are. And it's, it, it just raises some red flags when we're spending that much money on a single day event. And we can better invest that money into our students while still giving our teachers, you know, the appreciation, the team building activities and everything else that they deserve. Because you know what? They are the people who are with our children for eight plus hours a day. Um, and they have hard jobs and it's important that we recognize that. But at the same time, we need to understand the purpose of the district. The district is to I was just gonna say, the purpose of the district is to make sure that our children have the tools and resources that they need to succeed later on in life.
Yeah, for sure. I wanted to ask you your views about this, the district's World of Work program, which David Maishiro ruled out, and he has touted it all over the country. They've sold this to other districts. You know, essentially it's teaching kids occupational skills, you know, bringing in experts in different fields to teach them about potential occupations. But, you know, you gotta ask, is this coming at the expense of, um, learning, reading and writing and mathematics? Uh, what, what are your views on that? Can you do both? Can you do both or do they need to take a second look at that program?
I, I think you can do both. I, 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 I think the World of Work program in concept is good. You know, we need to make sure that, that kids have, you know, real world experiences, real world knowledge. You know, I, I remember looking back at my education, the requirements that I passed chemistry and algebra two and, and physics and all those types of things. And I've never used it before in my life. I have learned more being on the job in one day than I have, um, elsewhere. So it's definitely important that we, we bring the occupational knowledge back into the classroom rather than just, you know, the math, reading, writing. Obviously, that's, that's critically important, but we also need to make sure that they have the tools to succeed later on in life. My question is, what business does the district have getting into lending money to a private foundation um, with the hopes of possibly generating a profit later on down the road? Because essentially, my understanding of the makeup is, there's the district. The, the district is taking taxpayer money. They are loaning it to the World of Work Foundation and the World Work Foundation goes out into the, the world, I guess you could say, the nation and tries to sell this curriculum with a contractual obligation to make sure that, you know, a certain percentage of, of proceeds go back to the district, hopefully to, to make a profit there. But there's an issue with that. Um, just one example happened earlier this year. The, uh, World of Work Foundation requested a loan of over $300,000 to put on a conference for, um, for its curriculum and basically inviting teachers, staff, superintendents, educators from across the nation, to come to this conference in an effort to promote it, to sell it. And the foundation was required per the contract to repay the district, the 300,000 plus within 60 days. And that was back in March. So the money was due in May and the district still has not seen a return on their investment. They haven't even received, uh, payback of the loan. So the question is, where did that money go?
Very troubling. So that's maybe what the audit might show us.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, very good idea. You've talked about wanting to see more respect of parents. Alex, can you give us some examples of cases where you, you believe the board has been disrespectful to parents? Or in particular, the board chairman, Jim Miller, your opponent in this race?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I, I don't want to focus too much on Jim during this interview because I really want to stay focused on the issues. But, you know, having talked to parents throughout the district thus far, and, you know, I've only been in this campaign for a couple months, but the sentiment remains the same. Parents don't feel that they're respected, their input, their, their, um, their opinions are respected. You know, when they get up and they speak to the board, it seems that the board is distracted. They, they, they're just kind of there to, uh, hear, but not really listen. Um, you know, I, I've heard that, you know, board leadership has even commented on parents being the peanut gallery. You know,
We saw the other night, a former, former board member, Jill Barto came to speak. And, you know, the chair made some comment about, oh, you don't even live in the district anymore, or words to that effect. And, um, I don't know, you know, we've seen when kids can be for them concerned about gun violence, him popping on his NRA hat and, you know, touting, uh, his, you know, beliefs in gun rights, but not really offering sort of anything. I, I get, you know, he's a Second Amendment guy, a lot of people are, but it just seemed like it wasn't validating the concerns of children that time when there'd just been a mass shooting. You know, perhaps he might have at least listened respectfully or perhaps offered some other solutions, uh, you know, that might help make schools safer, but, um,
And, and that's just, that's a reflection on leadership. You know, leadership requires the ability to have respect, to have respect for people that you don't, that you don't agree with. You don't even, maybe, maybe you don't even consider yourself possibly having, uh, any sort of agreement with them in the future, but still being able to sit down and listen and have a civil conversation. You know, I, I remember reading your article about that, that board meeting in particular. And, you know, I am also a Second Amendment guy, um, as a conservative Republican. But that is not the time or place for that type of action.
It begs the question though, Alex, um, if you're not for restricting access to guns, do you have other ideas for making sure that schools are safer for the children, you know, in this era of so many mass shootings?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there's, it, it, if you look at just the historical record, most of these mass shootings happen at soft targets, places where the perpetrator knows that there won't, there will be little to no security. Um, so making sure that, you know, we have armed officers at, at schools. Making sure that, that, um, you know, I'll go so far as to say, I, I personally believe that teachers should have a right to carry if they, you know, pass certain requi- requirements, if they're able to get their CCW, their concealed carry permit, um, maybe go through some additional training since they are going to be, uh, potentially dealing with a chaotic hectic situation and they're gonna be trusted to carry a firearm. Uh, maybe there's some additional training that could be, um, applied there. So they're able to operate under that level of stress. But I think that that's also a conversation that, that that, that needs to happen with parents, law enforcement and other stakeholders. It's not a decision that I can make just by myself.
Yeah.
Um, because my job as a board member is to listen to the concerns of the community and try to figure out a solution that best meets the needs of everybody. I don't believe that banning guns is the answer. But at the same time, you know, being able to invite or involve members of the community into a process to where everybody kind of reaches a consensus. I know we're not gonna be able to please everybody at the end of the day, but making sure that the public has a voice in the process.
And what about better, maybe better mental health screening, mental health counseling to maybe try to identify troubled students before it reaches that point?
Yeah, there always is that option as well, you know, mental, the mental health crisis is kind of the unspoken, pandemic that we're dealing with right now in the United States, and it is more critical than ever. You've seen with, you know, previous mass shootings, these guys have gone through background checks. They've gone through all the federal requirements. They've, they've done everything, but they're still able to get their hands on weapons, whether legally or illegally. So mental health is important, but I think it's more of an education and removing the stigma of mental health awareness. Because, I mean, just going to a therapist, some people aren't comfortable telling their friends or family that they're going to see a therapist. We need to be able to remove that stigma and, um, make it more normal. You have a doctor checkup every year, every six months. Why not have a mental health checkup at the same time?
Good point. Well, as well as, I think, cracking down on bullying, because so many of these kids who wind up, you know, becoming mass shooters have often had a background of bullying. We certainly saw that at one of the local high schools some years back where there was a mass shooting here in East County. Uh, one of the two had been victim of bullying apparently, and it wasn't really addressed. Um, so there's, there are, there is a lot, you know, beyond, many people would support, you know, gun control, but for those that don't, there's certainly many other options besides just, you know, doing nothing. Um, on another subject, at the last meeting, we heard a lot of parents upset that the board was basically, seemed to be ignoring their pleas to allow public input in the review of the superintendent, David Maishiro. As, you know, as we've discussed, there've been some controversies about him, not to say everything is, is bad. I'm sure he's done some fine things, but, um, there have certainly been a lot of controversies. And yet, the board wants to handle, uh, you know, renewing his contract behind closed doors with no public input. Do you believe the public voices should be heard in determining whether to renew his or any other superintendent's contract?
Absolutely. And, and you know, the current bylaws state the public should be involved in that process. Which is why it's so concerning that they're trying to change the bylaws, basically cut the public out of the process. You know, for, for years, um, you know, going back to when Jill Barto was on the Board of Trustees, she had been pushing per the bylaws for an official evaluation process. You know, where there's goal setting and it's taken to the public and the public has an opportunity to weigh in on what those goals should be for the next, uh, year. And that just hasn't happened all the way up until today, to the point where, you know, board leadership is saying, oh, well, we renewed the contract, so that counts as his official evaluation. Um, just kind of skirting the bylaws and not maintaining any level of accountability for district staff. And let me make it abundantly clear. The role of the Board of Trustees is not only to look out for the best interests of the children that they're serving, but also to hold staff accountable. And that has not been happening. In fact, it seems almost as if, you know, the superintendent kind of has control over the board in this sense. So that needs to change. That, that relationship needs to flip. You know, if the, if, if you are any CEO of a Fortune 500 company and your profit, profits were tanking for five years, that board of directors would fire you.
For sure. At least demand some changes, you know, some, something, but not just saying, great job. Let's rubber stamp, give you raise, you know?
Exactly. And you know what? We have one of the highest paid superintendents in the state of California. So why, why are test scores continuing to tank?
A very good question, Alex, and I will look forward to hopefully finding some answers one of these days.
Me too.
On another issue, we have seen in some school districts, both nationally and locally, uh, kind of a new wave of controversies over things like trying to restrict the teaching of critical race theory or basically, you know, history of racial issues in this nation, as well as book bans and, you know, restricting counseling or services for LGBTQ students. So I just wanted to see where you stand on some of those, um, controversial issues.
Yeah, absolutely. You know what? The book bans, I'm not the biggest fan of that term, just because it, it's not necessarily what's going on. It is more along the sense of, you know, removing material that's not appropriate for children at elementary school age.
Age limit, barring it, just saying maybe something that might be okay at 16 isn't okay at 10, you know?
Just like they have movie restrictions at the movie theaters. But, you know, my rule of thumb is, you know, if it's pornographic, it doesn't belong in the classroom. If I can't read it out loud in a public, if I can't show it in public or if I can't read it in public, it does not belong in the classroom. And that's it. It, it's, it's that simple.
And how about the other two issues? The, uh, critical race theory. Critics of it would say that it's sort of whitewashing history a bit when you have, you know, the governor of Florida saying, hey, slaves benefited from slavery, you know, we shouldn't teach about the, the bad, the bad side of slavery. Does that go too far? You know, are there, are there, uh, is this something that, you know? Well, I'll leave that open ended for you, for you to answer the question on that one.
When it comes to, to CRT, critical race theory, I think the, uh, the operative word there is theory. Um, it is not a proven, academically proven, um, subject, I guess you could say. And in many cases, it, um, it seeks to do the opposite of what it's trying to, to, uh, create, I guess you could say, in the sense that, you know, it's trying to bring sense to racism and bigotry and everything else. But at the same time, it, it also separates people into classes. You know, we are the United States of America, the key word there being united. And we are all free, we all have the same rights. And it's important that we focus on the principle of equality rather than diminishing somebody, somebody's experiences, somebody's, uh, education, somebody's opportunities based on the color of their skin or, or, you know, where they're from. It's, it's just simply unfair. And rather than judging people based on the color of their skin, we should be looking at who they are as individuals and what
We not run a risk though of repeating, you know, sort of the wrongs of history if we don't teach about it? Whether that's the Holocaust or slavery, do we not need to teach it? Not saying that it's, you know, uh, not trying to diminish white people, but, you know, just having kind of an unvarnished view of what actually happened to, in Americans in this country, for example, or, or, uh, black people.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, and, you know, at least in my experience growing up and going through, you know, the public education system, all those items were taught. I learned about all the bad things and, you know, if you, if you don't learn about history, you're doomed to repeat it. And I definitely think that those things need to be taught. And we, we especially should not censor those things. You know, I've, I've heard calls that we need to, uh, censor certain dark parts of United States history when it comes to slavery. And that's just not acceptable, or certain dark parts of World War II and the Holocaust. And that's, that's just not necessary. I mean, look what's going on in Israel right now.
Tragic.
I, it, it, it breaks my heart what's happening. And it's just a lack of understanding of, of, a lack of accurate understanding of history. And if we start sanitizing and censoring certain pieces of it, people aren't gonna see the full picture and it leads to what is happening right now in the world right now. And
Yeah, very, very well put. Who are your principal endorsements, Alex? Or is it, or do you have some yet?
I do have some, you know, I have a number of, um, of current and former board members throughout the East County area, uh, East County Parent Alliance, Santee Students or Santee Parents for Choice. I, I am very pleased and also honored to announce that before our call, I had a wonderful meeting with former supervisor Diane Jacob. And, uh, she has offered her support to my campaign as well as her endorsement. Thank you so much. And, and it, I have to, I have to be honest, it was a humbling experience to be able to meet her in person.
She is a former educator herself before she was a supervisor. Yeah.
Exactly. So I, I'm, I'm looking forward to having her support and
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, 17 years on, on the school board and another 23 on the county board of supervisors. And, you know, she, she kind of had this, this approach to, to governing that, that I really admire and I want to emulate, which is a community-based approach. It's, you know, our job is to serve the people.
Yeah, I, I've seen her, you know, stand up against, um, you know, even people that had given money, say, speaking at a Chamber of Commerce event and speaking against an organization that had given the chamber a lot of money. And, and, uh, she once told me that if you cannot look your biggest donor in the eye and tell them you're voting against them because something is bad for your constituents, then you shouldn't be in public office. So, uh, you know, say what one will about Mrs. Jacobs, she certainly had, uh, I think ethics, which is so often lacking in politicians today.
I, I 100%
Yeah, go ahead. I was gonna say you were on an ethics board, but let's hear your views on, uh, you know, are there ethical reforms needed in this district?
I, I think that there's certainly some transparency reforms, you know, making sure that the public has an idea of what's going on, when it's going on, and making sure that they also have a voice. So much my career to this point has been focused on, uh, public engagement and the public policy process, let's call it that. Whether it's, you know, multi-billion dollar infrastructure project or, you know, a housing project or something like that, whether it has to go through the environmental impact report process, if it has to go through the scoping review, making sure that the people who are gonna be most impacted by these projects have a voice and a say in what the end result is going to look like. So it's going out into the community, it's knocking on doors, it's inviting them to public open houses. It's making sure that, you know, they have the, they, they don't just feel like they're involved in the planning process, but to actually have them involved in the process. So that's what I want to bring to the, the Board of Trustees, is that level of involvement and engagement and making these meetings more accessible so more people can attend. More opportunities for
Are they still not putting videos up on their site? They do videotape the meetings, but you have to like go in the office and ask for them or something, I've heard?
My understanding is that you have to go in, you have to put in a request, and I think they only hold on to it for a few months and then it just gets archived. And I, I'd assume at that point you have to put in a Public Records Act request.
Yeah, I gotta say here, I gotta throw in for the benefit of our listeners out here or viewers, if you're watching this on the site, uh, that we ran into issues with this a few years ago. We kept asking for tapes of public meetings, they weren't providing them. Every time you'd go in the office, there was that excuse why they couldn't turn it over. So we finally sent a reporter in to start taping them ourselves. And they actually threatened to arrest our reporter for taping a public meeting. That's how much they didn't want transparency. They told him he had to go in the back under the noisy air conditioner where it wouldn't turn out. And we actually had to get an attorney, Corey Briggs, shout out to Corey Briggs, you know, to send a letter on our behalf pointing out just how illegal this is. You know, it's California, you have a perfect right to, you know, record any public meeting unless it's, you know, somehow disruptive, which they claimed it was. And I, and it was a recording device the size of a cell phone, you know, sitting on the seat next to my records. There's no way, you know, it was just, they just didn't want recording going on. So it, it, you know, they kind of have a long history of, I, I don't understand why, uh, they should be very transparent and want the public to see what's going on. I, I don't understand why, uh, they should be very transparent and want the public to see what's going on and want to encourage public input. Um. We just had a, you know, someone from a, a Lakeside School Board attended this last meeting and, you know, this person mentioned to me how appalled they were. To see how it was conducted, it was so different from their school board meeting where, you know, the public is generally respected and, you know. Uh, treated quite, quite differently. So I just thought that was an interesting observation. But Alex, what else would you like, uh, you know, voters out there to know about you that I haven't specifically asked about? And also where can they find more information on your candidacy?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, you know, residents, if, if, if you're in the district five or area five of El Cajon, uh. Uh, Union School District, you can go to www.wellingforschoolboard.com, all spelled out. Um, you can also find me on Facebook and Instagram, but really at the end of the day. My campaign is about the children. And making sure that parents have a voice in the process, making sure that parents know what is going on at the school board. Making sure the parents know what's going on inside the classroom. Um. And really designing this district around the students. Making sure that they have the tools, the opportunities, the resources. To be able to live successful and good lives. At the end of the day, that is my goal. You know, this is a nonpartisan race. I am Republican, I am conservative. I am a Christian. I'll be the first person to say it, but, you know. When I look at my kids, I, I have, my son's turning four in just a few weeks, my daughter just turned two. Uh, we have another one, another boy on the way in March. When I look at them, I wanna make sure that they have the best opportunities presented to them, especially when it comes to their education and I'm willing to fight for that. And. I'm willing to fight for your children too. Because at the end of the day, these children, they're our future. They are going to take care of us when, you know, we're old and retired and, you know, we gotta hand the reins to them at some point. And I want what's best for all of them. I, I honestly don't. It doesn't matter to me if you're Republican, if you're Democrat, uh, what your skin color is, what your background is, what your income level is. What your, um, gender identity is. I wanna make sure that your child has the best educational opportunities possible.
That's very reassuring to hear. And Alex, what is your website if people wanna go find out more about you?
Absolutely. It is www.welling, W E L L I N G. Forschoolboard.com.
Very good. And we are, of course, nonprofit, nonpartisan, and so we'll certainly. Be happy to interview any other candidates who may come forward in this race or for any of the other seats on the Cajon Valley District. So, you know. Stay tuned, the, the, the race is early, but Alex, I really wanna thank you so much for taking the time to come on here and. Join us on the East County Magazine Radio Show on KNSJ. These are really important issues. I don't think there's anything more important. Than, you know, the education and the well-being of our children. So thank you for caring.
Thank you so much. I appreciate being here.